Okay, we're gonna call the meeting in order. August 15th, the Menifee County Board of Education Regular Meeting. First time this is, we have a roll call. Board Member Evans.
Here.
Board Member Cooper.
Here.
Board Member Spencer, I'm here. And Board Member Manus and Board Member Smith are absent. I'm going to do a, please be legions.
Please be legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Menifee County School District values, beliefs, and goals, our vision as we are Menifee, where we ensure every student transitions on a pathway to successful future in academia, military, or career. Our mission, empowering future generations to be productive and successful in a global economy through community, deliberation, creative thinking, instructional rigor, and relevance in order to improve the quality of life for all.
Our values, strong work ethic, reliability, positive focus, determination from staff, parents, students, and the community. Foundation for a successful transition, for a solid future, self-worth, everyone is valued, compassion, parent involvement, attendance, and school prep.
Our core beliefs, a good education will pull kids out of poverty and make an impact in our community. Teachers and administrators should passionately teach fundamentals while instilling morals and ethics. Every Menifee County student can learn in higher levels. Personalized education to meet the learning needs of students.
Our goals, by 2020, all students will graduate prepared for a successful transition to academia, military, or career. By May 2020, we will have 96% student attendance rate. By 2020, all students at the ends of grades K, 3, 5, and 8 will be at or above grade level based on iReady reading and math data. Students at the end of grade 10 will be on or above grade level for reading and math based on Mastery Prep data. The 2021 Menifee County Schools will have a new 21st Century K.A. in school facility.
Next time this is, adopt the agenda. I make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Student recognition and staff recognitions. You don't have anything? Treasurer report. Eunice balance sheet.
All right, if you look at your balance sheet, at the top of the general fund, we have, at the end of July, $1,917,000. And the special revenue is a negative $125,927.19, and that is our quarterly reimbursements having come in on those 21st Century and Striving Readers Grants. Fund 21, District Activity Fund, we have $51,000. That's the schools' money that's up at the district for them to use. We do have a new fund, Fund 25, that's our student activities. Like I told you, Gatsby 84 changed the definition of a student activity. It is no longer put at the back of our financial statements. It has to be in our financial statements now. So, all student activities will now be kept at the board. Right now, we have $44,195, and that's the schools' student activity money. Capital Outlay Fund, we have $224,000 in that. Your nickel account has $181,000 in that. Your Fund 360 has $13,659,933, which is your bonding fund for the new school. Your Food Service has $244,000.
I'm moving to accept the Eunice balance sheets.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Monthly financial report.
Okay, if you look at your financial report, you're gonna wanna focus on your general fund revenues, which I think is page four, if I can get there. Nope, five. This time last year, we received $1.9 million. So far, we've already received $2 million in the general fund. And expenditures, last year, we were at $1.7 million, and this year, we have spent $1.8 And then if you look over on your food service, it's revenues. Last year, we were at $232,000. This year, we're at $202,000, and our expenditures, $218,000, and year-to-date, we're $233,000. We made, I think it was $27,000 over summer, after the summer feeding program was done.
Moving to approve the monthly financial report.
I'll second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bank reconciliation.
Okay, if you look at your bank reconciliation, we have a reconciled balance at the end of And you can tell that the balance sheet numbers are there at the top. We did have, the bond fund is kept in a separate bank account, so I added that down at the bottom. We're having some stock payment fees refunded by the bank, and the flexible spending difference is that where they're doing twice a month instead of once a month with our payroll.
Moving to approve the bank reconciliation.
I'll second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Cash flow statement.
All right, on your cash flow statement, when you look at this, you're gonna notice that, kind of, it's been a while since you guys have seen it like this, but the July 2019 here, oh, that's the wrong one. I sent you the wrong one, Martha, I'm sorry. Anyway, so, the carryforward balance is $15,695, that was at the end of June. So, we take off the bond funds to actually show where our balances are. We're still at, so we end without the bond funds at $2.5 million. So, it shows projected that we'll stay around $1 million in the general fund at the end of the year, and that's kinda how we've been doing every year. And I'll make a copy of this in the nickel, so you guys are sorry.
I make a motion to approve the cash flow statement.
I'll second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. PDSA, PDSA report.
We have a group now. We're ready. I'll do the first report, and it is high-quality teachers. We've had four days of professional learning. The first two days focused on curriculum alignment and developing assessments that were aligned to the newly revised standards. Good two days of work. Then we had Kegan Training, which is about using different strategies within your classroom. We've already started walkthroughs, looking for those strategies being implemented in our classrooms. And today, in our COLA meeting, we discussed the results of those walkthroughs. About 65% of our staff are already using those strategies, and that's just in a three-to-five-minute walkthrough. So, we're sure that number's higher, and we'll be looking for that later on.
I'm Jody Blackburn, and I missed the meeting of introductions last month, so I'm the new Director of High Quality Instructional Systems. In that role, I've been working with principals over the last week, using our data to see what we can do to meet those instructional goals for students, how we can group, use our resources. I've also been working with the CTE program at the high school, and so that's been a lot of professional learning, including two different conferences we were able to attend, to come back and implement that here in the district for students. And it's just really been a good start to the year.
I'm Abby McCormick, the Director of Personalized Learning. And so, this past month of July, beginning of August, we have finished up some trainings for IUP Development co-teaching, and tomorrow, we have our progress monitoring training. We've spent a lot of time working with our principals and teachers on building their schedules and helping teachers understand just some basic IUP process. We've also started some MTSS, Tier 2 and Tier 3. We just had one small meeting, just to kinda see where everyone was and catch a gauge of where we all are, and it's been an amazing start to a fabulous school year. I'm just so excited to be here.
Hello, Ashley Pellfrin, the Director of Support Services, and want to inform you guys about attendance right now, which is very exciting. Our principals, our guidance counselors, our family resource, youth service center coordinators, support staff, teachers, just everyone's been working very hard to ensure that our students are here every day. So, just some numbers to share with you guys. Our attendance today was fantastic in that all of our students, all of our schools, met our 96% goal for the year, so we're very excited about that. Our year-to-date attendance percentage is 97.2%, again, already ahead of our 96% goal. So, very exciting news to report, that our schools are creating environments where our students want to be, and that is a point of pride for everyone in Menifee County. And I'm looking forward to reporting to you guys in May that we've met our 96% goal.
Thank you. Transportation report.
Anyway, transportation report, we've done bus evacuation drills, those being completed at school. Of course, we do encourage folks, if you're applying to school, we need school bus drivers. We will be back on, all our routes will be covered on a regular basis, starting tomorrow morning. So, we should be back on regular schedule, and we appreciate all the cooperation with our parents and the staff of getting our kids to school. Of course, most of you are probably aware that we did have a bus accident on Monday afternoon. I wanna commend all the staff, you know, I know some of the principals were out at the scene of the accident. Wanna really commend the bus driver, Donnie Brown. He handled it in a very professional manner, and Donnie did an excellent job with making sure the kids were all safe and taking care of the kids till emergency personnel arrived. Also, I wanna thank the Menifee County Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, Menifee County Ambulance Service, Moreton County Ambulance Service, and also wanna commend the parents. Did a really nice job, and just wanna appreciate everyone that was involved with that. Made a, you know, it was an unfortunate situation, but fortunately, bus drivers, everyone handled it in a very professional manner. So, really wanna thank, once again, can't thank Donnie Brown, Mike Perry, Jeremy McNabb, Willie Brown, for all their work, and all the administration for working to make sure that was handled in a very professional manner.
It's in Adams.
Kinda go through those with you. The Traditional Bank, the ACH Agreement, that's just an agreement that Traditional Bank has requested that we redo with them. Constitutionality, Protected Prayer in Schools, that just states that the Board doesn't have any policy that prevents or denies participation within religious student-led activities. KDE, School of Community Nutrition, Permanent Agreement. The only change with that is we had to make a change from going from state manager to superintendent. The TAR Report, that's a report that Mr. Weiss and Mrs. Bartley put together to show the technology usage within the district. We are looking at the Annual Data Security Report, that is, just kinda goes to show if we have any breaches in security or anything, that we've got a plan in place that would address that. High School Chromebook Policy, Mrs. Schwartz has worked very diligently. She feels it's time that our students start taking their Chromebooks home, and that policy will be a first reading at this time, that will allow our students to take Chromebooks home. There is a $30 fee for those, it's kind of an insurance policy for those, and she is also making arrangements for kids that they can afford that fee to work with her and trying to make sure that every kid gets appropriate opportunities for that. Cost per bus mile for bus trips is $1.53. One of the things within the community that'd probably be of interest to the community, the compensating tax rate for the 19-year will be 53, will be recommended to the Board at 53.4. That would include exonerations, which you can go up to .3. So, the tax rate for Menifee County would be 53, 53.4 cents per hundred, and that would be down from last year of 53.6. Also, with our food service program, looking at adding two full-time cook positions, one at the high school, and then one at halftime at BOTS for the after-school program, then a half-term interim they could rotate between the schools. Updated pay scales, looking at adding an increment for the insurance coordinator, and then Ms. Bartley, there was one. And Save the Children, site coordinator salaries. Emergency certification for a couple, for a teacher, for the Teach for America program. Also, to let KSBA serve as a contractor to help us provide with our Medicaid, the training and billing services. Motor vehicle and watercraft property tax rate would be no change, would be 49.4. Also, approve easements for the sewer and water lines with City of Frenchburg for the new school. Also, to look at the easement with Delta Natural Gas, there's a word that had to be changed from permanent.
Permanent and perpetual.
Permanent and perpetual, just a minor thing to approve at the last meeting. Memorandum of Agreement, one of the things that Senate Bill 1 came out with, was that SRO needs to be present at all schools at certain periods of the day, and we will be utilizing the services of Travis Birchwell that will be going between the three schools. We'll be utilizing $11,000 of the Kentucky ASAP money, and then the Board would be picking up the remainder of that salary. Also, Morehead State University, Ms. Schwartz has been working with providing dual credit for our students here at the high school, so that was Memorandum of Agreement, would allow for that program to continue. First reading of updated policies, 3.221 AP 23, and then 3.12 AP 23 for certified and classified. It has come to the attention that anytime someone does a sick leave, that they do have to have a signed affidavit, and it has to be notarized. So, Mrs. Schwartz, or not Mrs. Schwartz, Ms. Moore, will be working with the principals, will be working on getting folks, getting their notaries where they can sign those. So, if a staff utilizes the sick day from this point forward, it's an affidavit, and it will have to be notarized, and that come out of the last session. It's been a statute that's been in the books for numerous years, and typically, teachers just had to sign, say, enter sick, but it has to be notarized now. Approve the classified evaluation forms. We've tied the evaluation forms now to the job descriptions as part of the management audit. Our evaluation forms were kind of vague and just kinda generic, and we now have tied those to the, to the actual job descriptions. Probably won't get full effect of those until the 2021 school year. Out-of-area hardships, those have all met the request. Ms. Pellfrin has went through and worked with principals in that group, those have all approved. And use of the MES gymnasium for the Menifee County High School Alumni Union on September 21st, and of course, they will be providing insurances, that will be pending that they provide insurance coverages. And then the field trip for the freshman leadership conference, be overnight trip November 15th and 16th, and then the fundraisers, you can see it's the beginning of the year, and the principals assure that they all meet the requirements. So, those of you who can send agenda items.
Any questions or discussions? Not make motion to approve all the consent items.
Second.
With the exception of A11, which I will need to abstain from. Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving all the consent items with the exception of A11, 65% aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adam A11.
I move that we approve Adam A11, consent items.
I'll second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Discussion items, approve.
Great. Hold on just a second. Never mind, it's in discussion. Go ahead.
Discussion items, approve unaudited annual financial report and balance sheet for 2018,
All right, so, when we look at this, which I get way more excited about this than you guys do, so, I'm sorry, but this was a good year. If you look on page 5 of our AFR monthly report, the AFR, that one, and I know it's detailed, and it's not as thrilling for you guys as me, but on page 5, we actually, our year-to-date total in our general fund is $10,884,000. That's the amount of revenue that we received. And then on page 9, we spent out $9,315,000. Now, that's a lot, we have a lot left, but we did a lot of things with that last year. We've got all the Chromebooks, we've got all the teachers' laptops, we have updated equipment, we've updated just about everything, we bought textbooks, what have we done? We've done a bit of everything. Textbooks, training.
A lot of, a bit more.
Yeah. See, that, yeah. Yeah, and we've been able to do that and still maintain the balances that we have. And if you look at, over on page, well, 30, sorry, Kelly, the revenues in our food service is $1.2 million for last year, and we spent $1 million. So, that is our unaudited AFR. And with your balance sheet, at the end of the year, we did, our cash balance is $1.6 million in the general fund. Of that fund balance, you know, we talked about this before, we restricted the sick leave payables. So, when people leave, they get paid 30% of whatever sick days they have left. So, what we've done, the Board approved, was set back half of whatever sick leave balance there is, so that it's there, and we can't use it. So, the $1.5 million is really gonna be our beginning balance in our general fund. And then our special revenue fund, we zeroed that out at the end of the year. Can't really see that there. District activity, we ended that at $45,000, that's all school money. Your capital outlay, we had $178,000 in there, and that's after we moved all those funds into our bonding to pay for the new school stuff. And in the nickel, we ended the year at $3,800. The construction fund, we had the $13,823 to build our new school, and in the food service account, the unrestricted, the restricted new assets, which will go into the new year to be used, was the 2.2 down here at the bottom. You can see that there, because we had some payables up there that reduces that. But that's what's going into the new year, or this year now. And our auditors will be here Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday to work with us. We've already, based on their list, we scanned everything to them, and they have all their documentation already.
Any discussion, questions? I make a motion to approve the unaudited annual financial report and balance sheet for 2018, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, authorize Superintendent to approve change orders up to $24,999 without Board approval.
This will be on your new building. Anything under $25,000, anything over $25,000, it has to be sent to KDE for approval. Right now, on your change orders, you're at a $30,000 to the good, because they changed the storm drainage around the building. They did have to install a drain in the middle of the swell that was on the property. That was, I think, around neighborhood of $13,000. So, as of right now, you have a positive $17,000 for your change orders, and this process just eliminates the need, typically, change orders, I would contact the Board Chairman before I would give final approval, but this just keeps us from, it keeps the process moving forward in a timely manner.
What's the average size of a change order? I don't know.
So far, we've had one change order, and it was $13,000, and you're probably looking at another one before long, around $8,300. Anything over $25,000 has to be sent to, has to be sent to KDE for approval, and it's mostly just to expedite the work where there's not a stoppage in work on the project. And Lord, I can't remember, but what'd they typically say, how many change orders typically on a project?
I think it varies, but they did say that the majority of your change orders are gonna be right now in the groundwork. So, if you wanna keep that moving, it's what is possible.
Dry weather won't hold up forever.
They're actually, they're actually having that water right now, it's a dry.
No other discussion or anything? I make the motion to authorize the Superintendent to approve change orders up to $24,999 without Board approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor, she can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Personnel notifications.
I'd like to mention reflect the following, hiring of new personnel district-wide. Kristen Dusina, custodian at the high school. Dwayne Manning, certified substitute. Shelby Rose, certified substitute. Menifee County High School, English Language Arts teacher. Rachel Chaney, Save the Children's Program tutor. BOTS Elementary Teacher, Chelsea Howell. I'd like to remind you to reflect the resignations of Garrett Collier, bus driver. Zana Hensley, FMD assistant. Kelly Harvey, which will be effective on August 31st, 21st century after-school coordinator at BOTS. Transfer of Lauren Parks from FRYSC clerk to Save the Children Program Coordinator at Menifee Elementary, and the Director of Transportation.
Maintenance request form report.
As of right now, on the maintenance request, we'll be working on getting, we're transitioning from that report, and Ms. Franklin will be given a report at the next board meeting. I'd like to mention reflect, from mid-July through mid-August, the following groups contributed to the Menifee County School District. Christian Appalachian Project, Carke Energy, Mayor Bryant. Several members in the community donated several aisles of clothing and shoes. A lot of that was through our backpack program, and Ms. Means will probably review that in a few moments. Pathways, $2,000 for shirts, and then Dr. Casisa's office, $2,500 for shirts for back to school.
KSBA 2019 Fall Regional Meeting connections.
This is just for your information, if you want to attend those KSBA Fall Regional Meetings, it will be in Nicholas County on September the 5th. If you're interested in going, that, please see Mrs. Moore, and she will sign you up for that, and also, the other two board members will need to be sent that information.
KSBA Board Member, training update.
That just reflects the amount of hours that each of you have right now. You all are well on your way to meeting the requirements for the, for this school year. So, I think you all three have to have 12 hours per board member, I believe, and you're well on your way for that.
Ms. Bob, date instructional support.
I just wanna say that if you've been around in this building, you need to thank Darrell Wells and Denise Burton, because they've done an amazing job with this building, getting us ready to go back to school, I'm really happy about that. And I can't say enough about what a great start we've had to our year, and between the staff and Ms. Williams, Ms. Sally, the teachers, the assistants, and the best students in the world. I have a great administrative team, we're all new. I always say we're green as gourds, but we're learning. Ms. Stacy Lewis, our guidance counselor, is working really hard about getting all the students and schedules and balancing, and Mr. Travis Manley has been really instrumental in the success of starting. We've got about 300 students in total enrollment, I checked today. We've got 83 freshmen, 74 sophomores, 94 juniors, and 53 seniors, or 58 seniors. We had a freshman orientation, and of that, we had 42 of those freshmen come out before, and it was a great jumpstart for them. We, Ms. Lewis also organized our first annual junior-senior jumpstart, and we had colleges here before they actually started. So, we're having our juniors already talk with career people and colleges to get them applying, and we had 39 of those juniors here and got those started. I'm very proud to say that we have 99 students taking an advanced placement course this year, which is an amazing thing for us at Menifee County. 12 English AP, 24 chemistry AP, 26 biology, 23 English, computer science is 14, and I don't think, I've got the environmental science on there, but we do, and I'm really proud of that. That's upping the rigor for our students and getting them ready, they can get college credit for those placements. For dual credit, today, Ms. Lewis took several students to Maysville, and they were doing the placement exams for Maysville, and so we have about 25 students doing dual credit. And on Monday next week, we're looking to see if we can take some to MSU, to get them in MSU enrolled and taking classes their senior and junior year, so that they can graduate Menifee County High School with at least their first year, if not. so that they can graduate Menifee County High School with at least their first year, if not, uh, associates, enough to make, give them an associate's degree. So we're working towards that. We're excited about that. Our area technology center, we've got, uh, ten students going to Montgomery County, uh, Morgan County. Our Morgan County principal told us that Menifee County had the highest, uh, pass rate on their industry certifications from, for all the schools that are there last year, so I'm really proud of them. Uh, they're taking welding, automotive engine repair, automotive collision repair, Medicaid nursing, allied health, and carpentry. Our CTE, we have sixty-four students in allied health, getting them in that pathway to when they graduate. Ag students and their pathways into horticulture and into ag construction, ninety-two. Our business is growing, we're getting more students, and we also have sixteen students in the learning pathway to be a teacher. We're real excited for that. Um, our co-op, we have, and I didn't get the numbers on that, Mr. Manley can help me a little bit. We're replacing students at our clerk's office, replacing students at, uh, many, where's the, some replacements, we're putting those students.
Fifteen students, and they're at various business partners, the county clerk's office, sheriff's office, uh, the circuit clerk's office, some retail businesses in the area and surrounding counties.
That means that they'll go to school half a day, and then they work half a day, and that's a work-based experience. We're excited for our students to be able to get that experience and go out to work. And then, uh, the, one more day, if everybody will remember, picture day is August the twenty-third. Seniors, uh, drapes, pictures. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willis.
We've also had a, a wonderful school year, uh, beginning for the first five days. Um, started last week with our back-to-school bash on Tuesday, and, uh, we had everything outside, it was very hot, if you were there, uh, but we had a great turnout. And one of the, what Mr. Spencer was referring to is, one of the things that was so neat was throughout the summer, we had members of our community sponsor backpacks for our students that were gonna start school that maybe didn't have the supplies they needed or a backpack, and we had one hundred and thirty-five backpacks sponsored by our community, which was, um, huge. Last year, it was sixty-three, so, um, we more than doubled that, and I'm proud to say that we only have seventeen of those remaining. Uh, we gave those out at the back-to-school bash, students got to come, pick out their backpack, it was filled with supplies, and we had those leftovers, um, for students that move in, um, and enroll and, and need supplies, so we can just hand them a backpack. So that was exciting. I cannot imagine a, a better five days. Everything has went smoothly. We had our, uh, last crying kindergarten parent leave the building on the first day at eight-thirty-five, that is a record. Um, it's very difficult for those kindergarten parents, but it, everything's went really smooth. Um, we currently have four hundred and fifty-four students in our building, um, and that's K eight. I know Ms. Brewer talked about the, um, Cagan professional development, and we are seeing that in our classrooms, and that is all about getting students engaged, getting them up and moving, getting them sharing, getting them talking, feeling comfortable, um, working in their class and working in a team. And as we're doing our walkthroughs, we're seeing that, so that's wonderful. It is so nice to have an SRO in our building, um, our school resource officer, um, to have him visible in the hallways, eating lunch with our students, um, last week was just a nice thing to see. And not just eating in there, but sitting down with students and building relationships, so that's been wonderful. And we, next week, have our first home basketball game. Uh, girls' middle school basketball is going strong right now, so first game, home game is August twenty-second, so come out and support our girls. Any questions? Thank you.
So I know a lot of people don't know me yet, but I'm super excited to, uh, be part of the Menifee County Schools family. I'm Joe Harris, and, uh, I just wanna say, before I get started, that when I walked into Bots Elementary School, it looked just like my elementary school that I went to in Inez, which is no longer there, and I knew I was home. And so, uh, I know there's been some bumps in the road, but we've had a really positive start to the, the school year. The last several days have been amazing. Uh, we have, uh, hired a lot of new people over the summer, we've been pretty busy, the site base has, but they've all hit the ground running. They're working hard, they all care about kids. As, uh, Robin pointed out, they're all using Cagan strategies in their classrooms, we've been in and out several times. Excuse me, my allergies are bothering me. But, um, uh, you know, they're working bell to bell, and they're doing great things there. Uh, we had a great turnout also at our back-to-school bash, I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you that Ashley Pelfrey came out and, uh, did an ice cream bar, and she can't, she ran out of ice cream right, probably about halfway through, and came up to me and said, "I'm gonna go, Joe Harris, cause I'm covered in ice cream now, and I'm out." And so, I thank her for coming out and helping with that, and then also, Ms. Brewer painted faces until the last kid left, and we had a lot of kids out there, so. I, I wanna say that we're celebrating every day at Bots because we've had high attendance. I think we've been pretty much, uh, highest attendance rate in the district at least most of those days. And we try to do something, uh, every day at the end of the day to celebrate that. I believe our enrollment right now is at about one ninety-five. I think we have thirty-six kindergarteners, and keeps, and keeps growing. Our Twenty First Century After School program is gonna begin on August twenty-sixth, and we already have forty-nine students enrolled in that, we expect that to be much higher. Uh, we, I think we cert-, we, they serviced sixty to seventy kids on a regular basis last year, every day. Um, and then I, I wanted to end with saying this, I think the best quote I've ever heard in my career so far was in a first grade classroom the other day, when a student said to her teacher, "Ms. Wilson, I am so lucky that I get to go to school here." And so, just like that student, I feel like I'm, I'm equally as lucky to be able to serve Bots Elementary School. Great things are happening in Menifee, and I'm happy to be part of it.
Just be the M minutes. Hang on that. Not school activity, but report. Do a discussion on that, and we'll stand communication chair.
This time, uh, if anyone in the community, there's a sign-in sheet in the back, if anyone wants to make any public comments, uh, at this time, uh, if you need to sign in, feel free to come on up.
So, my name's Sabrina Brown. I have a student at Bots Elementary, and I was made aware that there was a gas leak at the county, uh, well, at the school, and I was wondering why we were not made aware of it, because we're made aware of whenever there's a child that's been exposed to lice or chickenpox, but yet not gas?
Uh, if you want, I'll, I, cause I think I know some of the, let me just read you a statement here, this is, we actually had the state fire marshal that was here, uh, on Monday. I'll kinda go through the, the chain of events that occurred throughout, uh, and then we can kinda go from there. So first of all, I'll start out with the chain of events, and then, uh, if you got any questions, then from that point, we'll address those, but. On Friday, August the ninth, uh, we reported a pilot light that had been out on the stove at Bots Elementary. Uh, once we found that out, uh, we went up, shut that gas off to the stove immediately. Uh, the CO2 detectors in the building did not detect any CO2 in the building at that time. Uh, it was kinda confined into the kitchen area, uh, doors, windows, and so forth were open. Uh, we then had our maintenance staff come in, did gas leak checks, and it did not indicate anything of that nature as far as being any gas leak. That time, we went ahead and contacted Jefferson Gas, who is the gas supplier to that area. Uh, they came that afternoon, did not detect any leaks, uh, of that nature. So we thought the issue was resolved, and on Saturday, uh, the Public Service Commission then ordered Jefferson Gas to, uh, around three o'clock, to shut the gas off to the building. So there was no gas in the building, uh, on, uh, Saturday afternoon through Monday. Uh, at that time, we had folks come in, do another test on Sunday with the fire department. The, uh, emergency management system came in, none of those detected any CO, carbon monoxide in the building at that time. On Monday, then, through the PSC, the Public Service Commission, we then had a licensed plumber with HMC came in. They went through it to do air test on all of our gas lines in that building. Uh, they did have a few small leaks that were found, and the fire marshal will explain why that may have occurred. Uh, and then, uh, at that point, uh, the gas was restored, turned back on Monday afternoon. Stove was replaced this week, so there's no issue there. Uh, and then the, uh, the fire marshal came in, also did appropriate, uh, went through, went through everything with us, and, uh, since then, we've implemented a protocol based upon his recommendations, and, uh, those are kinda the steps that we have with that. Here's the letter from the state fire marshal. Uh, "Just wanted to follow up, after I came out fondering toward a gas leak. Uh, as was discussed, the school took appropriate action by checking for a leak and also checking the monitor of the, oh, the carbon monoxide levels. Since maintenance didn't find any leaks during the morning, I don't know what else could have been done. Uh, I reviewed the policy you sent, and it looks like a good place to start. A pressure test was also being conducted while I was there, and that will for sure let us know that there were any leaks present at the time. But if a leak was found, it may have not been during the Friday morning when this happened. In fact, shutting the gas off could have developed a small leak, since removing pressure from pipes could have caused the pipes to vibrate. The only recommendation I would make for the future, in which we've implemented this in a protocol, is call the fire department at the time and let them handle it. But like we discussed, no leaks were found that day, so there's nothing that we've done that you guys did not do on Friday. If I need further assistance, please contact me."
So, the leaks that were there, were they being worked on while the children were in the building?
Yes.
And then, once again, I don't understand.
There were very small leaks there in that, in that building.
I still don't understand.
But there was no gas in the building.
Yeah.
When the leaks were there, there were no gas in the building. The, the, when they were here repairing as a licensed plumber,
Yeah.
the gas was shut completely off the building.
I still don't understand.
And then the shut-off valve on the stove was cut off immediately as well.
I still don't know why, though, no one sent a note home. I waited till Wednesday before I ever, I ain't really extremely angry about it, because like I said, anytime that somebody has lice, they send a note home and say, "This is what you should look for."
Well, I can assure you that we've developed a protocol now, that everyone does have.
So it'll never happen again, is what you're saying?
You, you will be contacted. We've got protocol, staff actions, planable materials, uh, this actually came from the Center for Safe Schools. We actually took theirs, and we actually went and talked with other school districts, and we've actually modified this to where we feel ours is better than the safe schools. Staff actions, uh, if a staff smells gas, give you an example, we had a, uh, smell of propane at the high school. Uh, first thing we did, we immediately took action, called the fire department on Monday. There was nothing that was detected, so, but here, we notify the principal of his need. Most students have a sense of danger, which the students were not confined in that area at Bots Elementary. We would then call nine-one-one, contact the district support team, this would be the principal. If a gas leak is internal, implement evacuation procedures, refrain from lighting matches, candles, do not turn off electrical switches. Equipment included cell phones, electrical sparks can trigger an explosion. Determine whether to move to an alternative location using transportation to assist. Do not re-enter building until given permission to do so by emergency personnel and utility company. If gas leaks are external, all students, staff should remain in the building. Any students or staff outside should return immediately. Shelter in place, enclosure ceiling, and windows and doors as possible. Superintendent Visini shall contact utility company, contact the Menifee County Emergency Management, contact agencies as needed, administrators, board members as needed, and ensure our quality tests have been completed if necessary. So, yes, we will, this has been a learning experience for all of you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tina Wells. I'm a parent with a child at Bots, and I was wanting to know how long the leak had been persistent within the building?
I don't know if there was necessarily a leak in the building, I mean, it was a pilot light on the, on the stove that was not working. So I, I don't know if, I mean, I can answer, but I don't, there was never any gas leak, or kids were exposed to any gas in that building, to my knowledge.
So they wasn't exposed, you had, uh, staff have to go to the hospital and ICU?
I cannot review anything with staff due to HIPAA and FERPA violations at this time, ma'am.
I understand that, but the big fans in front of the kitchen and at the boiler room and everything blowing, the children was not, not, uh, at risk?
To my, w- w- as you stated with the fire marshal's report, the fire marshal felt that we did everything in an appropriate manner.
Okay, then let me ask you, how many, uh, carbon monoxide testers are in the kitchen and the gym?
Uh, I could, don't know if I could answer that or not, but I do know that there's one in the kitchen now, there's one in an adjacent room in the boiler room that's been there a long time. So there are carbon monoxide detectors, and, and they're also at all the schools now.
For now, so you all adopted into it?
We, we've taken this and made this a learning experience and make it better for our kids and the community.
Okay, and I also want to know, uh, people's been wanting to, uh, get in contact with our board members. You all have an email or, or anything to where the community can get in contact with you?
Contact information's on the website, is that emails on the website, Kelly?
No, hope we can make.
Okay, we'll get emails on the website for, for you.
Okay. And, uh, so from, from now on, if there's something that you consider a threat?
If we, if we've considered a threat, and we don't feel like that it would disrupt the educational process, yes, ma'am, you would be notified. I have no desire, I've got two children in my home, I was also present in that building. Uh, I assure you that I love living too well, and I love my kids too well, and I love the kids of Menifee County, also love the staff. I would not at any time wanna put anyone at any danger or anything of that nature. Uh, you know, I've been doing this for twenty-eight years, have no desire to hurt anyone.
Yeah. I worked at Bots School for eight years, it's Brenda, Ms. Martha, and, uh, I was just wanting to see what was incorporated.
We've taken this and made a learning experience from it.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Denny Graham, and, uh, when was the, the carbon monoxide testers installed everywhere else in the school?
There was one, they were installed on Sunday, but there were some already in the building, uh, prior to that, sir.
Okay, uh, boy, you just lose train of thought when you get up there talking to everybody.
And I, and I will tell you, Mr. Brown, uh, if you have questions after this meeting, or if you have questions that you think of, that you can't think of, feel free to stop by and see me, and I'd be happy to address those.
Well, yeah, I got several questions. Uh, why was the, why was it worked on while the kids was in the school?
There was no gas present, uh, in the building.
You start a vehicle in a garage and shut it off, and all they just still in there floating around.
But we did not have any, at that time, there was no presence of any gas in the building, according to the testers that we had, and the testers that the plumber had.
How do you know your tester was good?
There was a tester that we utilized as well as what HMC utilized, sir.
Wow, okay.
Benny Wells, uh, I was told that it, uh, took you like thirty minutes from the time they called to arrive. So, uh, how would you have known what gas was in that building, the danger risk? When the, the protocol should have been to call nine-one-one immediately?
Uh, not if you, I, once again, I read the state, the fire marshal's report,
Yeah.
so I'm gonna go with what he has to say. Uh, but as soon as I found out about it, I went to Bots School immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do wanna go over with the new school, uh, give you a kind of an update as to where we are with the new school. Uh, for those of you that have driven by Park Road and Wind Flat Road, the new school construction is coming along pretty well. Uh, the, uh, I guess it's now ATS is over the, uh, actually Walker Construction with it, within, along with ATS is now working on that site. They have, uh, installed a French drain in the middle of the swell that we had there. Do wanna give you some good news on the compaction rates, uh, of that field that's going in there. Uh, any field has to be over ninety-eight percent. They are filling, uh, they do one foot at a time, then there's a group called CTS that comes in, they do compaction test. Uh, right now, they're telling us that that is some of the best compacting soil that they've ever worked with. It is, right now, they're having to add water to it, uh, in order to keep the moisture content, even though with the heavy rain that we had on Tuesday night. Uh, but they're saying that that field is going in, compacted, and, uh, anything above ninety, everything has to be above ninety-eight percent, or otherwise, they make them tear it all back out and start over with that level of, that they're working on. But we've But we've been having compaction rates running 103, 105, and anything over 98 is considered to be pretty much as, as hard as you can possibly get. So they're working very diligently on that. They're supposed to have the concrete pad and have that started on September the 9th. So we, after Labor Day, should be able to see that. We were actually up on the site this afternoon with our construction managers. And you can see that the swell that was there is pretty much being filled at this time. Beautiful site, great location, and right now, the projected completion date on that building is February of 2021. But I think with the way they're going now, they may even be able to pull the concrete pad up and possibly do that maybe a day or two after Labor Day. So if the weather continues to cooperate with us, of course, I know we'll get it to get in some days in November and December, January, February, might not be able to be working. But right now, everything's going extremely well with it.
What time was the fire marshal's office called?
The fire marshal showed up at school on Monday.
Showed up.
On school on Monday.
We called him at 9:30 Monday morning, I think.
He was contacted way before 9:30 that morning.
Which out over the weekend, they wouldn't answer the phone.
Thank you.
No other items of business, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Are those in favor of adjournings? If I've said aye. They are adjourned.